Call the meeting to order. Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Statement of adequate notice. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10th and October 2nd, 2023, notice was sent to the home news Tribune, Star Ledger, Union County local source, Tap into, and the clerk of the municipality. No smoking. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items on this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is allowed at the regular scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Present.
Mrs. Fleming.
Present.
Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Rosada Quezada. Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo.
Present.
Ms. Centron.
Present.
Dr. Berghammer.
Present.
Are we going to skip right past approval minutes, go straight to public comment? Comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of this meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items only for three minutes. Does anyone wish to make a comment? We have anybody online? Moving right forward. We'll have the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. On Thursday night at our regular meeting, my report will include my presentation for the NJSLA Spring 2022 Administration Data Results. We will also be recognizing students and multiple measures for their participation. We will also acknowledge our students for It Takes a Village, and I will be speaking to School Violence Awareness Week, and also we are going to be having a principal's recognition presentation.
We'll go straight down the line to education. Ms. Lewis?
The Education Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendents, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item number one through three on pages five through six are for special education services, such as enrollment in out-of-district placements and child study team evaluations. Item number four on page number six is to amend action on previous education reports, such as dates for school events and costs for various child study team evaluations. Item number five on page seven is to approve field trips, which are in the hands of the board members. Item number six on pages seven through 11 is for use of facilities for various school events, such as athletic events, assemblies, a blood drive, and various awards. Item number seven on pages 12 through 21 is seeking to approve professional development for district staff. Items number eight through 12 on pages 22 through 24 is seeking to approve Title I-related activities to support student needs. Item number 13 on page 24 is seeking to approve our student participation in the City of Linden Tree Lighting Ceremony. Item number 14 on page 24 is seeking to approve the Seal of Bilinguality Examination. Item number 15 on page 24 is seeking to approve the writing, posting, and grading of lesson plans at Soul Middle School. Item number 16 on page 24 is to approve a digital textbook for biology classes at Linden High School. Item number 17 is to approve the submission of the superintendent's report, which will take place on Thursday night, October 19th, on student assessment data. Item number 18 is for special education support services in combination with DVR. Items number 19 and 20 is regarding the submission of Title I reports to the State Department of Education. Item number 21 is for a partnership with Boy Scouts of America, along with our 21st Century Program at Soul Middle School. Item number 22 is to grant approval for a staff member, Alyssa Ortiz, to conduct her thesis work here in Linden Public Schools. Item number 23 is seeking to approve college admissions visits, career and military visits at Linden High School at no cost to the district. Item number 24 is for a lieutenant with the U.S. Public Health Service to conduct presentations at School 4, 5, 9, and 10 as a pilot program on healthier health habits. Item number 25 is for the Linden High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team to participate in a tournament on December 15th through the 17th. Item number 26 on page 25 is to grant approval for the implementation for the LEED program, which is law enforcement against drugs, which is to promote positive interaction between youth and law enforcement. Item number 27 is to approve the determination for HIV incidence. Item number 28 on page 26 is for American Education Week to recognize the 102nd observance of American Education Week taking place November 13th through November 17th. Item number 29 on pages 26 through 27 is to promote and celebrate the importance of after-school programs. This will be taking place on October 26th. Item number 30 is a resolution proclaiming the It Takes a Village program, which we started last month, and we're excited to share that we'll be releasing an extension of the It Takes a Village program in partnership with the City of Linden, along with our mayor, where students will be participating in a video contest throughout the district, where they'll be competing against each other and be entered in for monetary prizes, which will be awarded to the schools. Item number 31 is seeking to submit the Division of Early Childhood Three-Year Preschool Program. And item number 32 on pages 29 and 30 is for Title III ESL tutoring activities, which will be taking place throughout our district. That concludes the education report.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. You want to read? Where are we going? Oh, I'm sorry. I tried to scoot on by that. Does anybody have any questions, discussions?
Yeah, I had a question. For the high schools' field trip to the Drew Barrymore Show, does that need to be on here even because I know it was previously approved, but I know we changed the date, or was that done last meeting? Is there going on the first? I didn't see it on the field trips, the district field trips.
What item number was that?
Did I miss it? I believe. All right. No, it was amended. Okay.
I'm sorry, what item number was that?
It was item number five. I was just asking about the field trips, but it was an amendment. It wasn't in order because it's an amendment.
Are there any other questions?
You have a question?
Yeah, just one. On item number 26, the LEED, I'm happy to see that, the program. Do you know when that's going to start and what grade levels?
Yes, we're starting at school number eight next Tuesday.
Great, okay. And then it'll just go from school?
Yes.
So I've been hearing that. Thank you.
No, I believe I can confirm for you which grade level. Fifth grade. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question on professional development. I see that we have all these. This is something that always bothered me, that since I've been on this board now, I have been always hearing about professional development, and we're sending all these people away for professional development. My question is to the superintendent. What do you think that you could do differently now so that all the money that we're spending on professional development could now be marketed properly to our students and other teachers?
I think there's a few things that we can do, of which we are looking at, which is part of my vision for our district, and that is to continue to identify the strengths of our staff, internal staff. Some of the professional development that you see on here are locations and titles that we don't have experts internally to offer, but for areas for student achievement, improvement, and wellness, we definitely can, and which we are doing, is build up our professional development series that we do have in-house. We offer professional development opportunities to staff where they're paid to train, as well as for those attending. Our Monday faculty meetings are geared towards professional development, and we do have our half-a-days once a month, our in-service days, where we are conducting professional development.
So help me to understand. You just said, for all these people that are now going out, that we are investing money for professional development, you are now holding these people accountable for coming back to our school district, sharing the information, doing workshops, so that we could help other people?
Yes, a new initiative that we are planning to push out is Turnkey Tuesdays with the administrative staff, where we, those administrators who are going to training, where we are seeking for them to share out and turnkey what they learned. Also, all of our employees who do attend professional development are required to submit a recap of the training that they went to, to their supervisor and their principal, and then they are to turnkey it back into their schools or their subject area to help strengthen that learning across the district. So yes.
That is what I want to hear, because it makes no sense. You're going away on professional development, and when you come back, it's only for you. I would be, I assume that if you go away, it's supposed, and you come back, it should be for everyone. And I don't think this is what have been going on. Well, I couldn't, sorry if I'm saying that, forgive me, because I really don't know. But I never heard anything beyond the actual training.
Train the trainer.
Yeah.
Train the trainer.
Yeah, love it.
And we do have that implemented in our district currently, Train the Trainer. It's building-based, and again, it can be content-specific or also by the department, where those that do go out to training, they are required to submit their forms. They put it, because it counts as their professional development hours, where all educators are required to get at least 20 hours of professional learning. And from there, they have to load that up, and that's where that document will go to to recap what they've been exposed to through professional learning. The Turnkey Tuesdays is something new that we're doing with our administrative staff. And if you're listening, you heard it first here. We did not push that out yet, but that's what we are starting in November for the administrative staff.
I think Train the Trainer is a great idea. Look at me here. This is not my normal job. I sit on the end, and it looks easy from over there, but when you get here, all of a sudden, you're like, wait, oh, I'm not going to wait and let anybody ask questions or have any comments. I want to go on to the next thing. So that's great, and I applaud you for putting that together. And I'm looking at this, and we used to have problems, like a couple years ago, we used to have problems regarding people going away, spending lots of money to go away and come back and not implement that, that we could see. So I applaud you. All of these trainings are close by, they don't cost a fortune, it's very important things. I applaud you, all of you.
I have another question. The next question I want to ask is, I know that we have recently put in the, what is it called, the Yori, what is a pack called properly?
Yonder.
Yonder. We have just implemented the yonder in both middle schools. That has now been for the last week or so. Could you give us an update as to how it has the parents and the students accepted it? Actually, I went, they started it at Soul Middle School about a week ago, right? And I was so scared, I said, dear God, I do not know how these parents are going to take it. So I'm going to go to the PTA meeting, just in case, so we, you know, our board could represent. I went to the PTA meeting, not one parent showed up. It was really, I was happy because I didn't have to defend, I didn't, you know? I didn't have to defend what our decisions, but could you share with us how the launching and how is it going with the students and how the parents are taking it?
The feedback that we received from both principals, McManus started it the day after the back-to-school night on September 14th, so they've been utilizing it now for about six weeks. And the principal has positive reports in reference to it, that students, the yonder pouches are here for one reason and one reason only, and that's for students to be able to focus and remain engaged in their learning. And it also, outside of the learning environment, those social environments in the cafeteria or in other areas, the one thing that they are now able to do a little bit more is communicate with the person in front of them. All right, so the phones are a deterrent because they are put away. Some of the concerns, not concerns, but areas that they did see, that there is a handful, less than 5% of the student population, who struggle with separation anxiety, I would say, in regards to their phone. But those conversations, and they did retrieve the phone from them, and then a parent has to pick it up. So there were no negative comments that was received from McManus. At Soul, their implementation started about two weeks ago, and their biggest hiccup was that, from the vendor's perspective, they expected the distribution of the phones to be a swift process. And the morning that the phones were distributed to them, it wasn't as swift as they anticipated, and it did cause a delay with the students getting into the building. The principal's security team, district's security team, were activated to ensure that student safety and security was a priority while the students were then brought into the building. And again, the principal's report was shared out that students were following the expectation of having those phones in their pouches. So I don't have any concerns brought to my level in regards to the pouches.
Only thing I have, because when they, when you guys pointed out the yonder pouches, you said it was going to be clear, they are not clear. So they put the phones in, you cannot see the phones at all. So that, it's a dark pouch, and as a parent, I hate to say it, but I'm going to say it, my son already probably knows, they said, they seen and how to open that up already. So they already know the trick and how to open it up, believe it or not.
You kidding me? That's smart.
Well, yes, and that was the feedback that was presented to our team when they were purchasing it. But the biggest deterrent was if they choose to open it or not, they're still not pulling it out in school, and it's not serving as a distraction from their education. And if it is out and it's retrieved, then the parent has to come in, and that's the feedback that I received, that now the parents are disappointed in their child for not following the school's procedures and expectations.
Our children are simply amazing. One of the things I, you know, a parent came to me and was concerned, and they turned to me and says, well, I want my child to have the phone during school hours, just in case I want to reach them. I said, could you do me a favor? Could you go home and check your phone bill? I want you to check your phone bill and tell me how many calls your child is making while in school, and how many calls they're making while at home. The parent found out the calls were no different. So that means the child was using their phone all through school. So you are a parent, we all are parents with kids, look at your phone bills. Look and see how much time your kid was actually using their phone in school, as opposed to at home, and you would realize that this initiative that we have put in place will truly decrease the phone use distraction that is hindering our, the pace of growth and education for kids.
I have one question. How much are the pouches each?
It's, I'll get that information to you.
Thank you.
It was about $15, I think.
$15, yeah? Someone asked me, and I didn't know how to answer that.
Because the reason why is that when I was in the PTA meeting, I said, well, what if the kids tear up the bag? How much, you know, how much do we charge them to replace it? I said, is it about $50? He says, no, it's about $20, $15, $20 really for each. I can't imagine it being more than that. It's just a bag, right?
It's a deterrent.
Yes.
That's what it is. It's just like when you go to a clothing store, when you walk into the bathroom, you can steal, if you would like to go to jail, or you could see the sign, they put signs up in the bathroom that says there are consequences for stealing. It's not that you can't do it, you have a choice, but do you want to suffer the consequences of the choices that you make? So I'm really glad that that worked out. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment in regards to the professional development in the presentations. We actually have had someone come up, Mrs. Kofalas, she has come up a few times to present to us some of her learnings during her trainings. And we were told in previous meetings, maybe about two years ago, a year ago, that when our staff are out at these trainings, they do come back and present to their peers. So maybe because we're not seeing it here in this meeting, it doesn't mean that it's not happening. I think it would be great for us to see some of those amazing things, but I don't want to say that it isn't happening. That's all.
That's good. A good point.
I remember that, yeah.
I have a question, please. On page 24, 14, and 15, can you explain a little bit more to me about that?
What was the question?
Page 24, number 14 and 15.
Page 24, 14, and 15?
Explain to me about it.
Both items, you said? Number 14 is for the, number 14 is for the Seal of Bilinguality Exams, where students demonstrate their proficiency in various languages, oftentimes it's their native language. And then number 15 is to approve the writing, posting, and grading of lesson plans for some world languages classes, in which there is a substitute teacher there, not a certificated permanent teacher. So a certificated teacher will be conducting the grading, writing the lesson plans for that class.
And who are those lessons plans? Who looks over those?
The supervisors, directors, and building principals. They review the lesson plans.
I have a question on item 30 in regards to the It Takes a Village program award. I heard something about a video. I wasn't really comprehending much about what that was. If you can elaborate, please.
Of course. So we're excited to share that we will be offering an extension to the It Takes a Village program in collaboration with the City of Linden and the mayor, where our elementary schools will be creating public service announcements promoting safety, wellness, and violence prevention. They will then be entering those videos into a competition. We have a rubric that's been created where those videos will be judged, and then one of the schools will win, I believe it's $500, a monetary value which will be contributed to the school. Both middle schools will follow the same process, they'll be competing to win $750. And then about the high school, the various grade levels will be competing to win $1,000. And then all of those videos will then be displayed on Channel 36 and throughout all of our social media sites.
With the high school, I know we said that the funds would go to the school, so with each grade, how is that going to be dispersed?
So I think because we're in the early planning stages, we'll partner with the high school admin team to determine what that will look like in terms of how it's dispersed to students. Will that be a breakfast? Will that be some type of celebratory event? But we're still in the early planning stages of what that will look like in terms of how the reward will be provided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love the fact that at least these movies would be on TV. That would be cool to see.
And they'll be student-created, student-led.
What do you think about that, Ms. Brianna? You the mastermind of the project.
Yeah, I think it's a really nice idea.
You think it's a great idea, right?
It's a good introduction into production.
Yes.
Introduction into production.
I wouldn't put it that way, but that's the proper way.
All right, if there are no other questions, comments, we will move on to finance?
Good evening. On Thursday night, the Finance Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, will be presenting the following resolutions for approval. Resolutions 1 through 5 are our monthly approvals that we do every month for the Board Secretaries and Treasurers Reports, as well as transfers, payments of salaries, payments of the bills list, and approving the Student Activities Report. Resolution number 6 is to amend a previous resolution. We had contracted out with H2M, our Architect of Record, for a roof project work that was part of our budget, and discussing it with both H2M and Tremco, who did an evaluation of our roofs, it was decided that school number one, roof area number seven, also needed to have its roof replaced. So there was an increase in the cost from our Architect of Record, from $150,000 to $166,750, to include that work as part of the bid. Next page, Resolutions 7, 8, and 9 are accepting donations. Number 7 is the $400 we're receiving from the Blackbaud Giving Fund. Resolution number 8 is $4,475 from Infineum. And Resolution number 9 is accepting a flute from a, sorry, a person. Resolution number 10 is approving the IDEA carryover. This was money that was not spent during the 2022-23 school year. We've submitted our final reports for the 22-23 IDEA grant to explain the detailed spending that a district took in. This was money that wasn't spent, so we're able to carry it over, which means we're able to increase our IDEA budget in the 23-24 school year for IDEA Basic, which is grades, or rather ages 5 through 17, by $20,771. Pre-K is only a dollar, which is most likely a rounding issue. In speaking with the Special Service Director, we're going to be looking to purchase supplies with that amount. As you recall, for the 23-24 school year, for IDEA, we budgeted the monies for out-of-district tuition costs. Resolution number 11 is for the purchase of a walk-in box refrigerator, freezer for McManus. There's a need for a replacement of the fridge there, as the current fridge broke. Resolution number 12 is revising the agreement for Title I services that we have with Union County Education Services Contract. This adjustment was due to changes on the non-public counts. Resolution 13 is approvals of contracts for our Technology Department, the CDW fat pipe networks for an internet traffic balancer. This is This is to balance out the network, to basically direct traffic to the appropriate server so it doesn't overload our network. And KT's Office Supply, that's for ID license and card services for our ID, student IDs. Resolution 14 is the approval of the Budget Formation Calendar for the 2024-25 school year. As you can see, there are some items that are already approaching. We're looking to approve it tonight. We just did the ASSA submission last week. We are going to be putting together in the Business Office the history of spending and distribute that information out to the principals and supervisors. Some of the dates on here can and will change depending on things like when the board actually sets up its board meetings as part of its organizational meeting. We also are waiting on the release dates of the timeframes from the state of New Jersey in regards to when certain items need to be submitted. But we're basing it off of last year's budget calendar because this, it tends to be that the dates usually line up around the same. As you can see, there's going to be a lot of committee meetings and Board of Education meetings, discussions with obviously the administration, the school administration. But if there's anything that you would like to see added to the calendar, please let me know, and we can certainly incorporate it into the calendar. So that's pages 54 and 55. The Budget Calendar, at the bottom of page 55, is a resolution for submission of our 2023 ESA Final Expenditure Report, just like the IDEA grant. Each year, we are required to submit a final expenditure report detailing all of our spending in the ESA funds, which is our Title I, Title II, Title III and Title IV. After we've done that submission, we will most likely have carryover approvals that we'll be looking for the board to approve at the next board meeting in November. Next page, on page 56, is approval of the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan and the M1 worksheets. The Comprehensive Maintenance Plan is required to be approved each year by the Board of Education. It's best described as a planning document in assistance with putting together the budget. The Comprehensive Maintenance Plan speaks to what we've spent during the 2223 school year, what we have budgeted for in the 2324 school year, and what we could potentially anticipate budgeting in the 2425 school year. The M1 section of that report details the minimum amount that the district is required to spend on maintenance. We are, you know, good in regards to that number. It means a very minimal amount that you're required to spend. Resolution 17 is agreement with the town for security for our basketball and football. We're looking at having eight to 10 Linden Police Officers to be present at each varsity football and basketball games, probably on the higher side for the football. Again, looking for them to be at the game 60 minutes prior to, as well as 60 minutes after the game. And that resolution continues from page 56 all the way through page 57. Resolution 18 is the disposal of equipment. This is technology equipment, Apple carts, an old Promethean board, Dell monitors and Dell towers that simply do not work anymore. Resolution 19 is approving the attendance at workshops for the board and administration. The reason why we need to do this is that the overall cost exceeds $5,000. Resolution 20 is, and this is new from our Finance Committee last week, we had put on, I think we discussed it in Finance, but this is a resolution. We're looking at putting a gate around a ladder that goes up to the roof at the high school so that we secure that area so that students can't climb up that, that ladder. Resolution number 21 is approving our Architect of Record to put together the construction documents, bidding and doing the bidding and solicitation and construction administration and project closeout for the partial window project at School 6. This was part of our budget presentation that we did for the 2324 budget. This would be looking to replace the windows at the gymnasium as well as in the cafeteria. Resolution number 22 is, I apologize, 22 could probably be taken off because it's also covered by Resolution 25, but we do have a need for a, going out for a bid on an L-MED 2 bus route. We've had a lot more students on our L-MED bus, and we're looking at getting a larger bus, in part due to the fact that we do need nursing services on there. Resolution number 23 is approving bids that were received on October 4th. The first three are the preschool routes. We had previously been busing them under a quote. This is to set up the busing for the Head Start Program for the remainder of the 2324 school year. The last route is NS-1, which is for our alternative school. As you recall, we went to a night program for our alternative program. Previously, the alternative students had been able to, I won't say hitch a ride, but were on other routes that would go by there. Because of the program ends so late, we had to set up a separate route for that. Resolution number 24 is authorizing the Business Office to receive emergency quotes. This is for a special ed route for School 9. Previously, Schools 9 and 10 had been on the same bus. However, there's been increased needs on the transportation, which is necessitating a second route dedicated just to School 9. And there would be, the route that we had previously awarded would just be handling the School 10 students. 25 is which I spoke about before, the L-MED 2 and the SE 9, because we are receiving emergency quotes, that's to temporarily take care of us. The bid would take us through the remainder of the year for this special ed 9 route. Resolution number 26 is in regards to our ROD grant. We did do an application for roof replacement as well as unit vent replacements. So we are looking, this is a requirement to be approved to receive the ROD grant funding. That's it in regards to the resolutions. I just wanted to give you an update on some of the other items that are going on. We are currently have our auditors in. They are looking at our 2223 school year. They are reviewing our purchase orders, our operations, and they'll be giving us final financial numbers for the 2223 school year. On some construction updates, we are going out to bid on the roof. We are out to bid on School 4 HVAC. School 9 and 10 is still under discussion in regards to specifically which kind of HVAC route we will go with. School 8 is being prepped to go out to bid by our architect. The marquees are set to begin installation this Thursday. Our wall padding gym, that should be starting soon. We just signed off on the designs. I just brought copies of them if anyone wants to see. It's just patterns. It would be, you know, every third or fourth wall pad would have a paw, and then underneath each basket would have the lion, or rather the tiger, I'm sorry. The weapons detection company actually reached out to me today to set up training, which means that the devices are coming in shortly. We have our vape detector system set up to be installed the week that we are closed. In regards to the bathrooms, School Number 1, we're, are, we're being told that the nurses' office will be completed next week. They are still working, obviously, on the remaining bathrooms throughout the district. The demographic study, it's, he just had one question in regards to some of our data. He's looking at getting that information to us rather quickly. We are almost done with the window repairs. There's a little bit of cleanup left on the intercoms, and unfortunately, we still keep reaching out to the rubber mulch. They're telling us that there's still a shortage on raw materials, so we will give you updates in regards to that once we get something from the vendor. But that's it in regards to my report.
Thank you, John. Can we go ahead and just move right on?
Questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did it again. Forgive me, my apologies. Does anybody have any questions?
I have two.
Or comments?
Number 16 with the maintenance. We were told in the past that we had, our book is a big book for maintenance, and there was a five-year plan. If I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong. Well, that's different. The five-year plan is the loan rates facility plan. That's for capital projects. Okay. This is, you know, your normal maintenance, like repairs, you know, sidewalks, you know, that stuff like that. But we do have a five-year plan for the loan rates facility plan. If you want, I could get it. No, I'm good with that. And then number 20. I think that's a typo, right? It's 4,320, not 4 million? Yeah, that's too many zeros. I was about to say, okay, that's a little, okay.
Good catch, Sam. That was good.
All righty, I'm good. That was it.
For number six, can we add the account to that amendment?
Who's that?
Can we add the?
Yes, you can add the account.
Do you want to ask if you have the budget for?
Does anyone else have any questions?
I have questions, but it's for close. Executive.
In regards to the public safety officers, do we have an updated quote for that?
I don't have that quote, but we could discuss it in executive.
Yeah.
When you say the vape detectors for the week that the schools close, what date is that? Fall break?
The fall break. It's the second.
Fourth. Fourth through the seventh. November 4th through the 7th is the first week of November. We're on fall break.
The first full week, November, it means November 6th through the 10th.
Fourth is a Saturday, my birthday.
I know that's right.
Is it about the material shortage?
Yes.
Okay, so they have to go out for bid for that so that they have more materials?
Can you speak in your microphone?
When you stated about the shortage of materials, explain how was the material shortage that made?
Yeah, I don't, like, we don't understand, we joke about it when I meet with my, you know, maintenance team. I don't understand how there's a shortage of rubber.
Exactly.
But this is what we're constantly, you know, we've been kind of checking with him every, you know, two or three weeks to say, what's going on with this? And, you know, that's just response that we're getting back. So, you know, we can, at this point, I think we're going to start asking around to see if that is truly the case. And then if not, if it isn't, then maybe we'll look to go with a different vendor.
Okay, all right. I second that, go to somebody else. Okay, thank you.
Do you have any update on the, on the crosswalk between the two high schools?
Well, you met with the architects this morning, actually, and it's, I think they're trying to coordinate between the town and the Department of Transportation to see if it can be a go.
Do you think we need to revisit our approach when it comes to that? I do not know if we need that no more than ever. Your guys would agree because of the gas stations and the movement from one building to another. So I do not know if we possibly need to revisit a report that was presented to the state as the, you know, as the, the real need for this bridge for security, for school safety, security. Does it make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, we can basically instruct our architect to make that argument that this isn't just, I mean, it is obviously a safety issue, but it's beyond just crossing the street. It's also, it's a security concern that we have in regards to having our students and having the students out off the campus, so to speak.
Ed, we lose control. You know, we have students going over there all day, all day. It's not like once or twice a day. It's continuous all day. We need to get a better handle of safety of all students.
Yeah, I agree.
One good thing, because last year, I think that was when we first, was it last year or the year before, when we came back into school, that two kids or three kids got hit by a car. And we've been fighting about this since our previous administration. So yes, the safety has been, since last year, at least, last year, that the two kids, because one kid gets hit, that's too many. When a dog gets hit, that's way too many. Okay, so, yeah, I think that's, that should be a top priority.
I think we should also, is, are we working on having police officers at the gas station? Has that been discussed?
I've seen them.
Is this like a?
And the way I've seen them, I'm not knocking on our police officers, the presence, I've seen them inside the cars when I drive by.
When I drive by.
I don't see them out intermingling. I do have a problem with that.
Should we say?
We don't have any, we don't have any control over the manner in which the city assigns their police personnel.
Right.
We can certainly make requests, and I'm sure the administration will work with us as best they can. But I'll defer to you, Ms. Perkins. I believe at the last meeting, we discussed that there was going to be school security patrols at that gas station. There was cars that were previously maybe being underutilized.
Correct. I've met with city officials in regards to how to partner with safety and security for the exterior grounds of all of our schools. And what we were informed of is that they are increasing their presence with the arrival and dismissal of students, the patrol cars with that. Our district does have a security vehicle that is utilized by our district head security. And the goal of that car, I mean, it wasn't parked because of staff, I mean, it was parked more so because of staffing. And our district security, again, was to go around to all of our schools, not specific to one location. So yes, we are increasing our staff, and that is in the process of coming into fruition.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments? We'll go ahead and move right on into buildings and grounds?
At the Thursday meeting, the Building, Grounds and Security Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent and the BA, will be presenting the following motions to the Linden Board of Ed for approval. Resolution 1 is amending a previous action on September 28th, changing the location to Reed School Number 5. Resolution number 2 is for School 10 use of facilities for the PTA, for drawing night, a tricky tray, basket drop, as well as a tricky tray ticket sales. Resolution 3 is for School Number 5 for a trunk or treat, as well as for its PTA meetings. Resolution number 4 is for School Number 6 for the Holiday Shop use of facilities. Resolution number 5 is for School Number 9 for a PTA to set up the holiday fair. Resolution number 6 is for the Linden United Soccer Club to use School Number 10 Gym and School Number 9 Gym for soccer practice. Resolution 7 is a request by Pastor Pamela Jones for the Fall Festival to be held at the Linden High School Cafeteria Gym as well as parking lots. And that's it in regards to the resolution.
Any comments or questions? Comments, questions?
I have a comment. Number 6, Passion. This young woman has stuck around and has tried and has worked so hard to be there for our kids, for our children. And she's just a young person.
And she's just a young person.
And she's a product of Linden.
She's a product of Linden. I love to see this. So I just, I thank her for really sticking it out. I know she's not here and everything, but this is amazing. This is what we're raising. It's amazing. That's all I had to say. Anybody else? All right, we'll go right into planning and policy.
Good evening. The Planning and Policy Committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. And this is a second reading on policy 5131, drug, alcohol, steroids, tobacco, substance abuse. And then there is a regulation that is attached to the policy, 51316, regulation, again, for drug, alcohol, steroids, tobacco, and substance abuse. And again, these policies were updated according to the New Jersey law 2C 33-15 to include language in regards to what is considered a criminal of a disorderly person, of a juvenile person in possession of or consuming any illegal substance.
Thank you. Thank you. And now we'll go into exec. Questions? Sorry, questions? I'm so sorry. Questions, comments? We want to do public comments now? Members of the public wishing to make a comment? You may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring to have spoken. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
I didn't finish reading the agenda when it was agenda comments, but number seven under Buildings and Grounds, the facility, we had a car for a ball festival. Do we know if we're missing tables and chairs?
Because every time we go and have an event, and then I'm always told that we're missing tables. So if it's going to, you know, using the high school tables, then I just want to let our custodians know to make sure they track how many they're putting out and how many they're bringing back. That's all. Thank you.
There's some wrestling. I think they have wrestling in the cafeteria today.
Anybody online? One more?
I hope so. I hope it's wrestling. I hope so, too. But I heard that people were walking in.
Good evening, Ramen Gail, AP, Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey, LEA president. I wanted to just take a moment and speak on professional development and us going, pardon While it pains me to admit, there are lots of things that I don't know. It's one of the, one of the great joys, joys of my life is going out and learning. And I bet if you ask any staff member in our district, they are in education regardless of their role because they are committed to the education of our students. Their education is contingent upon our continuing education. And there are, there are experts in the world who unfortunately have not chosen to come work in Linden yet, we'll get them eventually. But when we go out into the world, when we go out to conferences, when we go to these different meetings, it's so that we can pick some of the best minds in the business. We go out and we work diligently to make sure that when we return to our classrooms, to our buildings, to our offices, that we are able to run efficiently, effectively, and help our students as much as we're able to. So, you know, the district is moving leaps and bounds to make sure that we are able to turnkey the information we get to each other. But if there are questions about whether or not what we are bringing, what we are going out and learning is coming back and benefiting our students, I do invite you all, come hang out in my classroom. You know, I'm going, my name is on this agenda. I'm going to, I'm going up to Ramapo College, another public institution, to get Holocaust and genocide education, something that is continually crucial and is mandated by the state of New Jersey. So, you know, come, come hang out in my classroom as I bring what I learned there back here. You know, that happens on a regular basis. And Ms. Thomas, thank you for pointing it out, that we are always taking what we learn and using it to benefit our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that. And we really appreciate you, all of the teachers, continuing their education. We do. Can I get a motion? I'm sorry, is there any more comments? Can I get a motion to go into executive?
Motion.
Row call? Sorry, row call?
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Cisada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Fleming, like, 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 like,